Good evening. We'll call the March 21st, 2024 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order, and won't you please join me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
The Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start by taking the role. I am the Chair of the Board, Melody Rail. I see Trustees Mitchell, Retan, Smith-Evert, Valerie Jennings, and Mark Hammond are all here. Trustee Cross had a commitment this evening and will not be joining us. I want to start with our awards and recognitions, which is always a great place to start, and for that, I will turn it over to our President, Dr. Judy Korp.
Thank you. Well, it is my pleasure to introduce Arianna Shorter. She is our student that is here to visit with us this evening. I had a chance to meet her earlier this week, and I think you will enjoy her story. And Arianna, we're excited to hear from you.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. So, a little bit about me is I graduated from Olathe North. I was born in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, but I was raised here, so Kansas is my home. Olathe is my home. I started going to college at Baker University. It was a great school. I only was there for about a year, but I wasn't satisfied with like my college experience, and I just wanted more out of it. It doesn't satisfy a college student just to get the education. I was also going to work at UPS, where I now serve as a part-time supervisor, and I was able to learn a lot of leadership skills there by training other supervisors on how to do their jobs, so that is very dear to my heart. Here, I'm involved in Student Senate. I serve as a Senator. I also work in the Center for Student Involvement, where they help students get involved in clubs and organizations. I serve as the team lead there. My journey there was very...I built my way there. I was a work-study, and then all the ambassadors there graduated, so they were teaching me all their knowledge they had at once, and then I was able to become a team lead, and now I teach all of the ambassadors that will stay after I graduate, which this is my last year. I decided that I was gonna be here for accounting, and then I started working in the CSI, and I decided that I actually love public relations and marketing, so when I transfer to UMKC, that will be my goal, and after school, I plan on just helping small businesses within my degree. And that's a little bit about me.
Well, thank you so much, Amanda, for sharing your story. I've known you for all of just a couple of minutes, and I think your move to PR and marketing is probably the right move for you.[228.73][228.73](laughter) One of my three children graduated from Olathe North, and I would say that he had the best high school experience, and that probably is what led you to seek a little more out of your college experience. So, what do you see in your future after you finish your degree?
After my degree, I really want to work with small companies to just help build that relationship, help make sure that small companies are able to get the knowledge that they need to support their business and have a successful business. So hopefully, I find a company that will train me up to that, and hopefully I have my own business in the far future that will support that dream.
Well, there you go. Any questions or comments from my fellow trustees? Trustee Smith-Evert.
Thank you, Chair Rail. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for telling us your story. I hope this is on. I just wanted to say I completely agree that I think marketing fits you. That gorgeous smile, you have an aura about you which just says you're a people person, and I wish you the best of luck. You very much remind me of somebody who stands behind a podium every day, a very blue podium with a large American flag behind it, and I'm just saying, you know, don't limit your possibilities. You could go all the way to, you know, the nation's capital, or whatever, wherever your journey takes you. So thanks so much for sharing your story.
Thank you.
Trustee Retan.
I just want to say we worked together yesterday on the College Council, so it's nice to see you again so soon on the podium and get to know more about you, because we just sit next to each other.
Yes.
For being a leader.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for taking time to visit with us, and I know you were nervous, but you hit it well, so... Next up is the time in our agenda for an open forum, and I'll read my obligatory open forum statement, although I don't believe we have any speakers. The open forum section of the Board Agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the Board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled Board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the Chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled Board meeting. When addressing the Board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes, or otherwise the subject of review by the college or Board. There are no registered speakers for our open forum section of tonight's Board Agenda. Confirming?
Yes.
All right, and so we'll move on. And next is the first of our Board Reports, which is from the Student Senate, and Apuna Gonzalez. Good to see you again.
Good to see you all again. I hope you guys are having a great evening. I have a short update from Senate today. So, for our budget, we had given DECA $2,374 for an international competition, which they'll be competing in, and then we also are hosting elections next week. I think our voting is finished by Friday, and this will be for returning Senators and the future Exec Board. And then we also will be having a Service Week, April 15th through the 19th, where we will have events with the Clear &amp; Connect Program, an event with CASI, and then also an event at the Ernie Miller Nature Center. And that is all I have for you today.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions for Apuna? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the report from our college lobbyist, and Mr. Dick Carter, who we rely on both to keep us informed and to advocate for our interests. What do we got going on in Topeka?
Well, I'm going to do my part to keep the meeting moving along as well, and hopefully keep my comments short. You have my written report before you, and I'd be happy to answer questions in there, but I'm going to touch on a few things that are currently bubbling at the State House. We're nearing the end of the session, the regular part of the session, and it's that time of year when silly things start happening. Bills pop up out of nowhere with no notice of a hearing, things reappear that you thought were once dead, and so that's really what has been going on this past week, is we've just been scrambling to make sure that things we thought were dead stay dead, and that new things that come about, we hopefully have enough time to analyze them to make sure that there's not a negative impact on what may happen with our operations. So we're starting to see some of that play out. Today was the la...well, tomorrow technically is the last day that committees can meet before we start spending time on the House and Senate floor and during the conference committee process, and again, that conference committee process is where things can get silly. The Senate budget and House budget have both passed their respective bodies. The total amount is around $25 billion in all funds. When I first started in this business, the total budget for the state of Kansas, including federal amount, was under $10 billion, and so during that time, it's a significant increase when you talk about what the state does and the dollars that are matched from the federal government. That's a little more than $10 billion in state general funds, and so obviously you can see what the match is from the federal government that we take in and use for different programs in the state of Kansas. Higher ed fared very well in both budgets. I would say that we prefer the Senate version of the budget, just because of where the dollars are and how they're spent. The numbers are roughly the same. There's about a $7 million difference, and I don't have the details with me today. It's one of the stacks of papers that apparently I left on my desk when I was escaping the office today. But we will be working to advocate for that Senate version of the budget as that conference committee plays out. That process begins Monday at noon, and what it looks like is they'll come in...the room kind of looks like the table that you're sitting at, and we'll have three folks from the House Appropriations Committee. It'd be the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Ranking Minority Member sitting on one side, and the Senate Ways and Means Committee Leadership on the other side. And the first part of the process takes an incredibly long amount of time. They do what they call a read-through, and they will read through the budget and note where the differences are in the two budgets, and then we begin the process of give and take. And that will go on for quite some time until we arrive at an agreement that both of those respective committee leadership folks have taken to their House or Senate leadership and sort of have an approval. They think they can get the votes to pass the budget. That whole process will play out until April 6th. And so, again, during that time that we call hurry-up-and-wait is when some of the shenanigans can happen, and so we have to watch for that, for committees that are exempt and can still meet. The budget and the tax...so we know what the budget numbers generally look like at a high-altitude range. A lot of action occurred in the Senate with regard to tax policy. Very aggressive in the Senate Tax Committee. House, not so much. They kind of take a look at what reality is, what is available, what they think can get passed. Lot more people to deal with in the House, because you have 125 people that have to vote versus 40 in the Senate. I'll talk a little bit about some of the development of tax in the House here in a minute. I don't think anything significant is going to happen until after the consensus revenue estimating group meets in mid-April to really take a look at what taxes look like as far as what the expected receipts are for the state coming in around April, and they kind of take that forecast and look out a year and a half to two years to see what they think is going to happen, because every time you have a tax bill that comes through, that reduces...that spends money that you have coming in in the budget side. And so they have all these different proposals out there that they have to look at and true up and figure out exactly what the state budget is going to look like. So we have the big parts of the state budget that I think will definitely be taken care of before legislators go home for first adjournment in April, but when they come back is when probably some of the significant tax policy discussions will occur. We've got lots of money this year. We've got lots of money next year. That following third year, things start to look a little bit more grim when either some tax credits that have been issued for investment or companies that are coming to Kansas start to come into play, and we know that that's going to reduce the state general fund. There are other obligations. It could be bonding that the state has that come into play, and so we know that the timeline is such that the budget is flush now, but it won't always be. And so I think that's a little bit of why the folks that are in the Tax Committee area and in the Budget Committee area are going to wait to see what the consensus revenue estimates look like before we get a really specific plan of what any tax policy looks like. Heard the speaker say just this past week that they can only do what they can get the votes for with the time that they have. That's a telling statement, because they started out the session traveling the state, talking about different ways to change tax policy that would be a reduction for the taxpayers across the state of Kansas. Some of that has to do with individual rates for your income tax, some of it has to do with property tax, and we're not really there on any of them. The Senate has passed a significant tax package that is a flat tax package. The Governor will veto that bill. That's if it gets through the House. I don't think that the House is going to take it up. It'll be a part of the conference committee discussion, but they passed it with a 29-to-11 vote. That's a supermajority. It takes 27 votes to override a Governor's veto. That's what we call in the Senate, a supermajority vote. So we'll see what ultimately happens. The House just came out with a new tax package. They have also been advocates for the flat tax throughout the entire session and last year as well. It takes the individual income brackets, the two-tier...well, we have three tiers. It takes it to two tiers and adjusts some of those rates, which provides reduction for taxpayers, also takes into account a little bit of the property tax discussion as well. That has not been vetted through the committee process yet, and I see that playing out. The Tax Committee is one of the exempt committees. I see that playing out as we get closer to this end process. Again, those are the types of things where the conference committee is so critical, you have issues making their way for full votes of the House and the Senate that maybe haven't even been heard by one House, and so that's where things start to get critical. I think we'll see some change on childcare. That's an issue that I've talked about a little bit, and one that plays out here on campus as well. I think we'll see changes with regard to some reduced regulatory requirements, as well as increasing capacity. A lot has already changed. A lot of dollars have already been funneled into increased-capacity efforts through some other grants that have been ongoing for the past year and a half. That has started to reduce some of the problem as far as not being able to find childcare that still exists, but there's still an intent to address the regulatory environment as well, and I think we'll see that play out. There was a bill that has been around for the past year or so that we've been watching. It's the Dwayne Peaslee Tech Center Taxing Authority Bill. Somebody really wants that. Well, folks in Lawrence want it, and that bill...we saw the third version of that bill come late in the session after the first turnaround, and that bill had a hearing last week. We thought it was a courtesy hearing, but this morning, when the Senate Ways and Means Committee was working bills, they voted that bill out. Essentially, what that bill does is put to a vote...it creates a taxing district in Douglas County, and it puts to a vote for the citizens of Douglas County up to a half of a mil to create funding for the Dwayne Peaslee Technical Center. So we'll see what happens if that makes it all the way through to the end of the final process. It's not an institution of higher education. It's not accredited by any of the crediting agencies, but they do offer a lot of technical training and have agreements with institutions of higher education to offer courses in their facility. But it would be interesting, and the first time that we've seen a private institution be granted taxing authority. So we'll continue to follow that bill. The other bill that I wanted to talk about briefly is an elevator inspection, repair, and training bill. And this is a bill that if you've been around any buildings and noticed that the elevators are out, they may be out for a significant period of time, because there's not folks to repair them in a timely manner. The inspection side is a little bit of a different part of the conversation, but in this bill, it's House Bill 2826, it carves out a piece where post-secondary institutions can create a certificate for inspections and for repair. And so I know that the other 18 community colleges are also looking at what a program like that might look like to stand up fairly quickly and to be able to start providing additional folks in that elevator industry for service, repair, and inspection. So again, it's an opportunity that might present itself even for an institution like ours. So like I said a little bit ago, committees are done meeting. We'll be on the House and Senate floor next week. Again, it's hurry-up-and-wait. They gavel in, and they do no business. They say, "We'll come back at 10:15," and then they come back at 10:15, and they gavel in, and they say, "We'll come back at noon." We spend all day doing that, because really our time is spent in the conference committees where some of those negotiations are being held. April 6th is the target date for the first adjournment. They'll take a break for the entire month, almost, of April. The Budget Committees usually come back around the last week or so of April and start the preparation for the omnibus budget, or tying up the loose ends that weren't addressed in the mega-budget. And the veto session is scheduled to begin on April 29th. I think it'll be brief. I think it'll be quick. This is an election year for all House and Senate members, and so the intent is to get them out of Topeka and back home where they can start knocking on your doors and sending you letters asking for money for campaign contributions. So I think that's probably a good place to stop, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on those comments or others, if there are.
Thank you for that, Mr. Carter, and I often feel like I'm in a tutorial when I listen to you, and it's always very helpful to understand more about how the process works and where it can go awry. Any questions for Mr. Carter from the Board? I don't have any questions. I do find myself wondering...oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Smith-Evert.
No, I'm always in your blind spot.
You're in my blind spot. I'm so sorry.
With...I want to respect time, so I don't know if you can drill this down. When we're talking about the Senate versus the Houses' flat tax versions, are there any big outlying issues that are very different in the two versions that we should know? Because the flat tax is the one that is for flat tax, property tax across Kansas, right? That they're trying...
It's income tax. Flat tax for income tax.
Okay. What's the one that was for...they were trying...maybe it's already died, that they were trying to put in place to make...I thought it was a flat tax for all of Kansas for trying to take out the...our ability to control our own mills?
I'm wondering if it's...there's been several bills addressing property tax. I'm also wondering if it might be the constitutional amendment for capping valuations at 4%.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
So that bill was just...it was passed by the Senate during the last days of the session last year, and the Senate has...or the House has not really done much with it. They had a hearing on that bill and another constitutional amendment that would calculate a 10-year look-back on property valuations. It's rather complicated. It did not receive much support at all. If a bill were to move forward, I think it would be the 4% valuation cap. That also doesn't necessarily tie to capping property tax, because every taxing entity still continues to have their budget hearings, and when they turn in their budget to the county, the county certifies what that...what your mill levy rate would be, and so you can have the conversation around the table, but artificially capping the property values does not necessarily equate to reducing property taxes. And so I think...that's why I think...I'm not sure where that's going to end up. If one of those two were going to move, it would probably be that one. You would then see, over the course of the summer, your mailbox full of mailers from different organizations advocating for either the passage of the constitutional amendment or telling you why defeating it would make more sense, or why passing it would be a bad idea. You can look at either side of the coin, but that's likely what would happen. I don't think we get there.
Okay.
And I think there will be something related to property tax coming out of the House, but I'm not sure that we can say exactly what it is yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm done. I really am done.
I so apologize. I was just going to mention, I often wonder how they come up with things like, "We need more elevator repair people." I think it's great that that's a recognized need, and it sounds like something that would be right in our wheelhouse, but how does that even come about?
So I learned as part of this process that Kansas has an elevator...I don't have the note in front of me of what the name of it is. It has an elevator review board, and it just so happens that...Dr. McLeod is aware of it. Actually, we had a brief conversation, but I can't remember the name of what it is.
Yeah, it's a state fire marshal's office elevator. It's not review board, but it's Elevator Safety Commission, effectively.
Something like that. Representative Tarwater, just south of us here, happens to sit on that, as do a number of other appointees, and so they regularly review statutes related to elevator safety. They kind of get an update or a report on the status of elevator inspections, which are overseen by the Kansas State Fire Marshal, and so that's how we get to where we are.
Well, who knew? I'm glad that it exists, though, because it's one of my nightmares, being in an elevator and it falls, and if you jump at the last minute, will it save you? And I think the answer's no, but anyway, thank you for your comments. Always good to see you, Dick. All right. Next on the agenda is the College Council, and Jason Arnett.
Good evening, everyone. I think I'll be somewhere in between short and long tonight, so. College Council met yesterday. Ordinarily, we'd meet earlier in the month, but we had some scheduling conflicts. So we got some updates from all our members. Staff Council in particular, their town hall has been moved to April 23rd. There are elections. It's election season apparently across campus. Elections are coming up with at least one seat being vacated off of Staff Council, and the Council Subcommittee for Human Resources has been paused until things are a little more settled in HR, which we understand are starting to shake out this week. Academic Branch Council elections are closing this week, and then there are other...everything else was pretty normal stuff. You know, it was like, yeah, we're busy, we're doing this, we're doing that, so nothing extraordinary to report with that, but it does kind of ground us all in what's going on around campus as we go forward with our business. And then the Chairs of the Academic Branch and Staff Council, including me, have had a...we met with Dr. McLeod earlier in the month, and we started summarizing the definition of shared governance, his definition of shared governance, and this will help us...we have a draft, which I shared with him today, and this will help us to explain what shared governance is to anybody who asks. It's a better definition, or better summary of the definition. We also had a discussion about a proposal for a staff development course that's being reassigned to Staff Council, which was brought to us, and we said, "It's not appropriate for us. We'll send it to staff." So they're working on that. And then the Subcommittee for Communication is reviewing transcripts of the focus groups from October, and we're starting to see some themes emerge, and we're very hopeful that we'll have something definite to report in May. So, and that's all I have for you tonight. We'll meet again on the 10th of April, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason?
No.
I think it would be an incredibly wonderful thing if we could agree on a shared definition of what shared governance is, because I think it's one of those phrases that different people can assign different meanings to, and so that, to me, sounds like a worthy endeavor, and hopefully you'll be able to land on something that everyone agrees is a good definition, so.
We are very hopeful, so.
All right.
We seem to be making progress, so.
Thank you so much, Jason.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next up is the Faculty Association. I have a note that you've delegated your report. So, tonight's report for the Faculty Association will be given by Honors Fellows Amanda Glass, Danny Alexander, and Sarah Aptillon.
I guess I take the lead. Hello. My name's Danny Alexander. I'm an English professor serving as an Honors Fellow, along with my colleagues, Associate Professor of Chemistry, Amanda Glass, and Associate Professor of Religious Studies, Sarah Aptillon. We're each going to say a few words. In addition to regular meetings discussing vision and strategy regarding the Honors Program and its relationship to the college, each of us teaches a research-oriented Honors Seminar with a group of Honors students, usually a small class, and we work on an independent project to enhance the Honors Program. Since I've been on and off involved with the Honors Program since the day I arrived here in 1988, my project is to build a history of honors here at JCCC, one of the first community colleges in the nation to see the value of the enhanced educational experiences made possible through honors. Two-year schools were largely not doing this at that time. You know, it was a...we had to take a risk. During my first five years as an adjunct instructor at the school, the Honors Program, at that time directed by Matt Campbell, allowed me to team-teach classes in the development of the Honors Forum itself, which was a critical thinking class, a course devoted to dealing with issues facing the campus community and the world around us. Through those classes, we worked with students to develop programs for the entire campus community, including an entire school convocation once, I remember. Every organization struggles with its institutional memory. Unfortunately, grievances or disappointments sometimes outweigh our recognition of what we have done well and how much institutional wisdom we have won and developed over time. For that reason, every program I have worked on, from outcomes assessment to strategic planning... on, from outcomes assessment to strategic planning, workload, peer and program review, engagement, inclusion, and recruitment, has had to recreate its own history to move forward, having learned the lessons of the past. As Honors Fellows, we work to explore the potential of honors as a space for maximizing the college experience. And knowing our own visionary history with honors is an important part of knowing who we are, where we've been, and how we might use the program to develop the college as a whole. Since I've known and worked with each of our honors directors and have a history of working with honors students as long as the program itself, I know some good ways to start. But I'm looking forward to working with students involved in campus-wide programs who are interested in uncovering, I wrote it down, so I have to look at this page, uncovering the achievements of our honors history at the school. Knowing better all that we have achieved, and that includes the histories of all these students that have gone through the programs, you know, over the years, will not only deepen our pride and our institutional roots, but help us envision what possibilities lie ahead of us. This is only one. Of many ways, honors plays a crucial role in an exciting new chapter of our college's history. And I'm going to pass it to Amanda.
Do you want to ask questions of Danny before I go, or I don't, that's maybe a weird question?
I think you can go ahead.
Okay, cool. I'm sorry. I'm not telling you what to do, so.
Oh, no, you're fine.
I'm really excited. I'm always nervous at this thing. Okay.
We're just people. We're just people.
Oh, phew.
Odd people.
You're a person, I'm a person delightful. I am really excited to learn more about the history of the college and honors at JCCC. Institutional memory is so important to what we do. I appreciate Danny and his perspective and work. It is a joy and honor to work and learn from and with Danny. My name is Amanda Glass. I'm nervous at a microphone. I should just say this. This is my eighth year at the college and my third time at this microphone. I feel like I should say this. I'm a Kansas native, and I accepted a job at a PUI in Carney, Nebraska after completing my PhD at KU. We moved back to Kansas in 2016 in order to be closer to family, specifically grandma's. And now, having worked at a community college, I know I could never work anywhere else. The college's mission, vision, and values are closely aligned with my own, and I believe deeply in the transformative power of inclusive education. I'm also a third-generation educator. My momma teaches public speaking at Emporia State University and has already asked me to send her the link of this video, and will likely send me a critique of my performance for this evening, so please be kind to me. In addition to being an Honors Faculty Fellow and Associate Professor of Chemistry, to tell you about my experience on the campus, I am also Vice President of the Faculty Association, Lead Facilitator for Safe Zone, and an advisor for the Gender and Sexuality Alliance at JCCC Student Club. Like Danny, this is my second year as an Honors Faculty Fellow. I applied to be a fellow because I had noticed the diverse students that honors appeals to, and I was excited to get, to be able to work more directly with them. Just last week, I overheard a student conversation in my classroom talking about whether or not honors would work with them. I mentioned the brilliant diverse community of curious students in honors, and one student wanted more information. During class, I sent a couple of emails, and now she is filling out paperwork and in the process of developing an honors contract with me. So she wants to take the next class in my series with me, and she wants to do an honors contract with that. Honors helps students find community at this wonderful institution. Now, in addition to being drawn in because of the diverse students, I also regret not doing honors as an undergraduate, so I thought perhaps this could be a way for me to experience the perks, albeit 20-plus years later. I have also found the community in working with other honors faculty. We are like-minded folks, interested in innovative pedagogies, and willing to model intellectual risk-taking for students. Thus far, I have taught two honors courses, an honors seminar focused on the science of the chocolate chip cookie, and an honors forum that teaches about water quality and infrastructure, environmental justice, and civic engagement through the lens of the atrocities that are occurring with the Flint, Michigan, water crisis. The seminar and forum represent the two bookend courses that all students at honors, in honors at JCCC take, so it has been an especially fun journey for me to work with students at these distinctly different times and places in their educational journey. For the sake of brevity, I'll just speak a bit more about the forum. I team teach with adjunct professor Dr. Kristi Whitman Howell. Kristi is a history, sustainability, and community engagement expert. In our course, we truly embrace interdisciplinarity of honors curricula. Our course requires no science prerequisite and challenges students to engage in citizen science and to ponder the importance of accurate and equitable science communication. Students design and implement their own research product, project, not product, focused on water quality in their community. Last year, students chose to focus on water from taps around campus, and this year, they are planning on evaluating water from places they work and live. Students learn about both literature and scientific research and prepare and present a scientific poster, white paper, and presentation at our culminating mini-conference, where they engage with decision-makers and other constituents. Two shameless plugs. Our students will present their work at the STEM Poster Symposium on Thursday, April 25th, in the Colab OCB 100, and our mini-conference will be on Wednesday, May 8th. So you will all get invitations to both of those.
Thank you. And Sarah, last but not least.
Hi. Very happy to be here. I'm Sarah Aptillon, Associate Professor in the Department of Philosophy and Religion. This is my fifth year at JCCC, and my first semester being part of the honors program. So I'm teaching an honors course for the first time and an honors fellow for the first time this semester. So I'm really happy to be part of this wonderful program. And I just thought I'd tell you a little about the class that I'm teaching and what the classroom is like, because it is different from my other classes. The other day, this is a little example, I came to class, I had laryngitis, and I could not make a sound at all. So I came to the classroom, and I asked the students, like by writing a message to them on the whiteboard, I asked them to just take over the discussion on their own. And it was amazing, because they just immediately went into action, like got themselves into small groups, like had it all timed out, had these insightful discussions, just very resourceful. And I was so impressed, I just thought like we should be doing this every time. It was really illuminating. And the other thing about it is that it's a very diverse room full of people. And in particular, at the beginning of the semester, there were two people who were very much uneasy with each other. One of them wears like hats and t-shirts advertising a political position that the other one like vehemently rejects. And there was like talk of one of them dropping the class, and it was awkward and difficult. But it's been really nice to see that, like over time, they've come to be able to coexist, talk with each other. They do not sit near each other, but they do kind of like, from across the room, interact in a very nice way, and I've been really happy to see that. I don't know if I mentioned that the course that I'm teaching, it's called Exploring World Religions. It's a religion course. And so that brings up a lot of emotions for people, brings up a lot of personal stories, and I welcome that. It's, the students bring diverse perspectives on religion to the classroom and to the discussion. So we have like one person who has grown, who confessed to us, confided that she grew up in a destructive cult. We have, I should say they, not she, it's a they, they. That's not easy for me sometimes, yeah. And then we have a guy who says he used to be Muslim but isn't anymore. We have three people fasting for Ramadan. We have a student who had been baptized over the weekend and was really excited about that. And we have a student who's very excited about going to a synagogue that focuses on social justice. So it's just like we have really interesting conversations. And I encourage students to be personal in their approach to religion and be honest about their perspectives. The students are always ready to help. They're always ready to jump in. We've had situations like audiovisual problems and loud construction noise where they just immediately jumped in and solved it without making a big deal about it, kind of helping, just always looking for ways to help. At one point, they suggested making ground rules for our discussions. And then they came up with the rules, and they typed them up, and now they follow them. So I've been really impressed with that. And I would say that what I see in the honors classroom isn't just intelligence. It's more than that. It's a love for learning, leadership, a sense of initiative, and also vulnerability, a sense of belonging. And this is the environment that they are creating within the space that we create for it to happen. I found that this was especially true when I could not say a word, so I think I should probably do more of that in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny, Amanda, and Sarah. Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Smith-Evert, I saw you that time.
First of all, I want to give kudos to our faculty president for diversifying the voices we get to hear from. How incredibly important that is, how incredibly powerful that is. So kudos to you for having the foresight to think about how bringing other voices to this room is important, because I learned a tremendous amount. Thank you all, for each of you, for your bravery, for coming to the podium and speaking in front of these, you know, three-headed monsters up here that we are. I just wanted to say, as a fellow liberal arts graduate, the things I remember from college was all the things you mentioned going on in your class. And in community college, our big focus is always workforce development, right? It's so critical that we have people that are prepared to take jobs. And I would argue this is workforce development, because I want to share a community with two people who, walking down the street, can wear opposite political t-shirts and be okay coexisting and be able to have a conversation about that. I want to be with people who can have constructive conversations, think deeply about things, and try to solve problems that we all know we're going to experience in our community and our future. So kudos to you all for taking the helm, but also for not just shoving it down somebody's throat and telling them how they should think, but really cultivating that and showing our, you know, next generation how you can think and be different from your expertise. It is remarkable, and it's a gift for everybody in this room that just heard your, each of your very different but amazing stories from your classes, and it's a gift for our community. So, thank you.
Trustee Jennings.
I'll keep it really short. I just want to say thank you. Again, as a fellow educator, it's so refreshing to know that we have this happening, because we could all use it. What you guys talked about, the things that you are helping the students to better understand are things we all need to understand, and they're our future. So I just want to say thank you so much.
Trustee Mitchell.
I think it was Dr. Glass who was lamenting that she didn't do honors as an undergrad. I found that very comforting, because I don't think I knew what that was when I was an undergrad. That's it.
You know, I, as I was listening to all three of you speak, it occurred to me that as educators and as an educational institution, apart from the substantive learning, there are some really vital things that we do for the people we interact with. And one of those is to develop a love of learning, and Sarah, you mentioned that. And you don't develop a love of learning by having students come into a classroom, sit there, listen to a lecture, and leave. The things that you guys are doing, the innovative collaborative type of learning that you're doing, is what develops that love of learning in people who might otherwise, and I think this is true of a lot of honors kids, honors young adults, might otherwise abandon education, because they feel unfulfilled and unchallenged. And the other thing that we do that is so vitally important, and Trustee Smith-Evert, you sort of alluded to it as well, and that is, social awareness comes through diversity, being exposed to the viewpoints of others and the thoughts of others. I often tell people that you can have a point of view right up until you know someone who has the other point of view, and then it's really hard to hate them for it. And so being exposed to people who are different and who have different thoughts, and creating an environment where it's safe to share those thoughts and ideas is so incredibly important for the development of the folks that we're serving here. So thank you all. Thank you, Andrea View, who's the mysterious you we keep talking to, for inviting your colleagues to the podium. Wonderful to hear from all three of you. Thank you. Yes?
If I may say one more thing, what I could also see in all of your faces as you talked is there's something fulfilling that you're getting out of this, too. It's a two-way street, and I think that as faculty, you're also having, feeling valued and inspired and creative to be able to go to this next level, a real-life application, some deeper critical thinking with your students. So thanks for going that extra mile as well. And Kristi Howell is back.
She's adjuncting, so we have a high flex class, and she zooms in.
Tell her I love her.
I know, everybody was super excited. No.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, all three of you. Appreciate it so much. Okay, next on the agenda is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle update, and Trustee Smith-Evert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The J-Cert received $2,336,157.61 in sales tax in February 2024 and distributed $779,000 to each of the three university entities, which I believe we are a university entity. We currently have just over $107,000 in the J-Cert accounts. February's 2024 sales tax receipts were somewhat lower than the 2023 receipts. However, the cumulative over the first two months of the year is up. And the result is that the cumulative distribution from the J-Cert to each of the three universities is also up to $22,000 from the first two months of 2023. I think you meant 2024. That's what I'm thinking. The transfers were made March 1st, and the first meeting that I will be participating in of the J-Cert Committee will be Monday, April 22nd, at 8:00 a.m. at the KU Clinical Research Center. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Trustee Smith-Evert? Hearing none. Next on the agenda is the report from Trustee Cross for the Kansas Association of Community Colleges. And again, he could not make it this evening, so will not be able to hear his report to the extent that there was any. And so we'll move right on to the Foundation Report, and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you. The Foundation Report for March 24th. Summer Chanted Evening is set for November 9th. Make sure you save the date for that. Johnson County of the Year, the committee will be announcing their selection very soon. Sponsorship opportunities are also, will be coming soon. This year will be ability to purchase half a table, four seats for 2,000, full table. We sold to 5,000, and more details will be coming very soon. The Foundation is collaborating with the Theater Department to host a community event on April 26th. This is honoring the impact of the late Harvey S. Boddiker. Fittingly, the event will be held in the Boddiker Black Box Theater at 6:00 p.m. Immediately following. Attendees will be invited to enjoy the student production of cabaret. All trustees, all trustees are invited to attend and will be getting an invitation very soon. The JCC's Foundation Spring Scholarship Luncheon will be held on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 11:30 in the Capitol Federal Conference Room in the Rehner Center. Please save the date for that as well. Co-chairs been named for the Summer SIPS Scholarship Event, Nancy Ingram and Mimi Eckhart, will be serving on our secondary honor chair. The event will be held on June 20th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the Wiley Culinary and Hospitality Academy. JCC's Foundation team will help support the interior design fundraising activities around the PPG Color Speaks event. Two separate events supporting interior design scholarships raise nearly $8,000 for our students. JCC's Foundation is collaborating with the fashion design and merchandising team to raise funds for student scholarships through the Off the Cuff Runway Show. This year's event will be held on April 12th at 5:30 at the Wiley Culinary Hospitality Academy. Tickets can be purchased at the Foundation webpage. Tickets are also on sale for the Cohen Community Series benefiting student scholarships, education programs. This year, they have George Thoroughgood and the Destroyers, and we're performing on May 11th at 8:00 in the Yardley Hall. Purchase tickets at jcc.edu/George. And we have a save the date for the Harvest Dinner on Friday, August 23rd at the Rehner Center, and more details will be coming about very soon. That concludes my report.
That's a lot. You know, there's always so much going on with the Foundation, and if you've not taken the opportunity to attend some of the events, I know Summer SIPS last year was the inaugural event, absolutely one of my favorites. Summer Chanted Evening is always, always an incredible experience, so I would encourage everyone to get out and enjoy those. Any questions or comments for Trustee Hamel? All right. Next up is Committee Reports and Recommendations, and I'll kick it off with the Audit Committee Report. The Audit- The Audit Committee met at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, February 28th in the Virginia Krebs Room. We had an update from Rick Wright, the Director of Audit and Advisory Services, who presented the results of the Travel and Expense Review, noting that travel expenditures were generally found to comply with current policy and procedures. Findings noted were low risk and financially insignificant. Mr. Wright also provided an update on recent audit activities and plans for the quarter. Upcoming projects include work on our co-source partner, Forvis, on a payroll operations audit. Next, Mr. Wright presented an update on the status of prior audit recommendations. All of those recommendations are tracked and categorized based on risk and difficulty in addressing. And that's kind of an ongoing process, for those of you who are not familiar. The bookstore has completed three of six open items from the bookstore operations audit, and measurable progress has been made on the remaining open items. One item remains open for the IT Incident Management Audit, and this item is in process for an April 2024 expected completion date. As for the Ethics Report Line update, between November 18th, 2023, and February 19th, 2024, six reports were received via the JCCC Ethics Report Line. Two reports were received anonymously. All reports have been reviewed. Three cases have been closed and three are in process. An additional seven cases were received via HR channels, of which all have been reviewed with six closed and one in process. And I would just add that we did have some discussion about coming up with ways to make sure that everyone is aware of the Ethics Report Line, its function, its purpose, to make sure that it's being adequately utilized for folks to have an avenue to report issues or concerns that are appropriate for that ethics line. Trustee Smith Everett, did you have anything to add?
Thank you. Covered all of it.
All right. Any questions? Comments?
Except for we made everybody come to a table, but nobody came, but we tried.
It was very uncomfortable for some people to come to the table, but next time, we'll do better.
We're going to work on them.
We're going to work on them. That's right. All right. Well, that concludes my report. And so, we'll move to the Employee Engagement and Development Committee Report. And Trustee Hamel, I believe you're giving that report.
I guess so. I didn't know Rely was going to be here, but I can definitely do that.
All right. Thank you.
So, the Employee Engagement Development Committee met at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, March 6th. We had two things we went over. Dr. Corb and Sean Burkett, interim HR Director, presented recommended changes to the suspension, demotion, termination policy. Sean explained the removal of the refusal to submit to a polygraph test from the list of reasons for suspension, demotion, and termination, and added grounds, and changed the timeframe to appeal a suspension and recommendation and demotion termination. Is my recommendation to the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the modification to the suspension, demotion, and termination policy 415.08, as shown subsequently in the board packet. NISO move.
Second.
We have a motion from Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion?
I just, I have to comment about the polygraph.
The polygraph? All right.
I really think we're missing an opportunity here to include trustees in on that, but I guess I'll vote in favor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Go right ahead, Trustee Hamel.
All right. For the last one we went over, Dr. Corb explained the non-exempt salary table approved on December of 2023 from the board meeting. It was approved based on a 26 pay period that basically has a 280-hour work week, or work year. Dr. Corb clarified that using a 2,088-hour, the calculation is aligned with JCC's bimonthly or 24 pay period. This, the whole time, I kept thinking about, this is one of those mundane details rounding, and I believe it came with a .003% difference. And basically, we would have been overpaying $8, keeping the table where, or eight hours per employee keeping the table where it was. The proposal can be found on page 10 of the board packet. And it is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to adopt to the adjusted non-exempt salary table based on a 24 pay period and 2,088-hour work week per year. A NISO move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? I would just like to comment briefly. If I understand correctly, Trustee Hamel, this was just an inadvertent mathematical error. Makes no difference at the end of the year as to the total annual compensation. It's just a matter of how it's divided out.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Go right ahead, Trustee.
The next meeting for the Employee Engagement Development Committee is set for Wednesday, April 3rd, right here in the boardroom. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you for that. And next up is the Management and Finance Committee Report, and the man of the hour, Trustee Hamel.
Thank you once again. The Management Committee met on Wednesday, March 6th as well. Information related to the meeting can be found on page 12 to 28 of the board packet. We went over quite a few different things on this one. Grant activities, Melinda Bryant Smith, Executive Director of Grants Development, and Anthony Fenari, Sr., grant professional product, provided a report on grants, leadership, and development. The report included strategies and implementation, as well as an update on financial activities for the past five years. Total grant dollars awarded for '22 through '23 school year from federal, state, and private funding was $7.12 million. Capital Accupositions and Improvement Process Report, Tom Hall, Associate Vice President. Campus services and facility planning reviewed the status of the CDL Driving Range project and progress on the GEB first-floor renovations currently under construction on campus. Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. I guess that's not on this one. Review and update policies, Rob Caffrey, Vice President, Information Services, reviewed the recommendation changes to the use of technology and communication system policy 510.00. Rachel Leers, Executive Vice President, Finance Administrative Services, reviewed the recommended changes to the social media policy 520.00. Sandra Warmer, Executive Director, Mission Continuity and Risk Management, reviewed the recommended establishment of the protection of minors on campus policy 613.00. And here are the recommendations. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modifications to the use of technology and communication system policy 510.00. A NISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Go ahead with your next one.
Second one, this is the social media policy. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modification of the social media policy 520.00. A NISO move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And by the way, who knew that Twitter wouldn't be Twitter anymore? Just got to say.
That's my only comment.
Go ahead with your next one.
The next one is the protection of minors on campus policy for 613.00. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation to the College Administration to approve the adopt of the protection of minors on campus policy 613.00.
Seconded.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I just wondered about the root of this because I didn't see that we had a previous policy. We're putting in a brand-new policy, right? And I didn't know if it, if you could speak to what they presented at the committee meeting in terms of why we were putting this into place.
So, I had some questions on this as well, just to try to figure exactly what's going on. But basically, what this is doing is this covers, anybody on campus that's not in the classroom, not one of our students. So, other extracurricular activities that happen on campus is putting a policy in place for that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it clearly was like for groups that had, you know, are under 18 on campus. I just didn't know if there was a reason for it. I'm surprised we haven't had one yet, I guess.
I thought the same thing, so, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Go right ahead, Trustee Hamel.
We also, Rachel Leers presented three agreements related to the college's construction of the commercial driver's license, CDL Driving Range Training Facility in Edgerton, Kansas. Construction of Water Main Extension is necessary to serve the CDL Driving Range facility. Construction will be completed by JE Dunn Construction pursuant to the existing design-build contract with the college for the CDL Driving Range. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to enter into a Water Main Extension Agreement with the Rural Water District Number 7, Johnson County, Kansas, to serve the college CDL Driving Range facility in Edgerton, Kansas. A NISO move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You may proceed.
Okay. Along with that, construction of the Afriman Water Main Extension requires granting of the private easement to the Rural District, Rural Water District Number 7, with the rights of ingress and egress through this JCCC CDL Driving Range property. The college was working with Rural Water District Number 7, JE Dunn Construction, and a surveyor to appropriately define the easement rights. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the granting of the easement to the Rural Water District Number 7, Johnson County, Kansas, on JCC property near and around the CDL Driving Range facility in Edgerton, Kansas, related to the construction of the Water Main Extension to serve the CDL Driving Range facility. And the board authorized the president to execute the necessary documentation to grant such easement, and to take such other action necessary and appropriate to execute the same. A NISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Trustee Hamel, just briefly, I have a question for you. This, and really, the previous recommendation and the following recommendation related to the CDL range, this is all stuff that was contemplated from the beginning, correct?
Yeah, I think for the most part, I'm not 100% on, you know, where the Water Main needed to land exactly. I mean, we don't really know until they go through and do their work. Basically, does that sound right?
It's along the south edge of that property, right along 191st Street, is where the line will be, if that's what you're saying.
Well, yeah, and the sooner, the further it goes in, the less likely, less liability we have too. So, that's at least one of the benefits of this as well.
Yeah, we anticipated from the beginning, though, that there would need to be an easement. Now, we're just kind of figuring out where it's going to be and.
Yes. That's why it was included in the contract with JE Dunn from the start, that they would build it.
And I think it's a little bit bigger than we expected. Isn't that correct? But we didn't really know what to expect.
It's slightly different than originally contemplated.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and I believe you have one more related to the CDL range.
Correct. Okay. Since 2022, the City of Edgerton and JCCC have discussed potential future road improvements to 191st Street in Edgerton, Kansas. Such future improvements may be part of the benefit district established by the city through which cost of improvements may be split between the city and property owners pursuant to the stationary formula and either paid upfront or in a single payment or financed over a number of years. KSA 12-6A06 establishes a process for property owners to protest formation of a benefit district to pay for construction of sidewalks or street improvements. The City of Edgerton is requesting JCCC to enter into an agreement with the city waiving its rights to protest formation of such, of a benefit district for a period of 20 years. Other property owners along 191st Street have previously entered into a similar agreement with the city. At this time, the city does not have a timeline or plan establishment for future road improvements. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to enter into an agreement with the City of Edgerton, Kansas, where the college waives any right it may have under KSA 12-6A06 to protest the formation of a benefit district to pay for the construction of sidewalks or road improvements for a period of 20 years. A NISO move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Just briefly, I just want to make sure that I understand what this is saying. So, this benefit district is a mechanism through which the city and the property owner can collaborate on the cost of road improvements, and we're just saying, yes, we'll agree to do that. Is that, is that?
So, there's a couple of questions that I had about it. Was it, it could be calculated different ways, by square footage or by the amount of footage along the road. Depending on what that is, it could be more or less than what it is. Same time, it's being split across multiple different businesses and landowners in the area. Obviously, I think it's something we, if it does happen, we will be using. I wish I knew the cost, but as of now, I don't. But at the same time, I think it's, you know, something apparently we have to, we definitely need to do.
Yeah, I mean, our students are going to use the road, right? So, okay. With that, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. We're on a roll here, Trustee Hamel.
All right. Next one. Jim Fieker, Executive Director of Procurement Services, presented the procurement report. In this month, we have two bid recommendations and one contract increase recommendation. This one is for the active learning classrooms, and it is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the bid from Bull Creek Construction for Active Learning Classrooms renovations in the amount of $334,475, with an additional 10% contingency of $33,448 to allow for possible unforeseen costs with a total amount of $367,923. A NISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Trustee Hamel, do you know how many classrooms are involved? I know we have a list of buildings here, but.
It was five classrooms, is what I saw on there. And I didn't get the exact number, but I'm pretty sure we budgeted $1.5 million to do all five classrooms approximately. Do we, did we get the numbers?
The budget is $1 million for all of the classrooms for the fiscal year.
Okay. Cool. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Sorry.
Sorry. I'm going to say I'm going to vote no on these. And my biggest concern is, you know, the fact that you keep raising tuition and raising taxes both at the same time, and also being in a negotiation, I'd rather hold off and wait, so.
Yeah, we had a presentation several months ago on the active learning classrooms and what's involved and what it brings to the institution. And, you know, with that background, I understand your position, so. Any other discussion? Yes, Trustee Smith Everett.
Can you clarify what was said right before this about, so 1 million is for the year, and this is five of them? How many we, just remind me of the whole thing. I know we've gone over this many times.
No, that's fine. It's $1 million for the fiscal year. That includes five classrooms, construction, technology, and furnishings.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? And I need to look a little closer, apparently. Caitlin, that's why I have you to rescue me. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one, and you may proceed.
Okay. Next one, we have the roof replacement for the Science Building. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the bid from JR and Co. for the Science Building roof replacement in the amount of $367,000, with additional 10% contingency of $36,700 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $403,700,000. A NISO move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion?
Sure.
Trustee Hamel.
You know, I ask a few, I always ask a lot of details when we ask for spending money, especially these kind of sums. It's a 19-year-old roof on about a 20-year. And also, with the amount of construction we had going on through there, we had a lot of traffic on that roof. With anybody knows that traffic on your roof will add a lot more years than anything you can do to it. Basically, it was hailed on based when you have somebody rocking on your roof that often, so. That's what I wanted to make sure everybody knew about.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and I believe we're down to your last one.
Yes. This is for network infrastructure equipment. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve an additional $200,000 to Sears, Sirius, for the network infrastructure equipment for a total of fiscal year '24 in the amount of $1.267 million. A NISO move. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hamill, seconded by trustee Jennings. Any discussion? I have a question for you, trustee Hamill. When I think Sirius, I think that company that provides music for my car stereo that I didn't want to pay for, that's not what this is, right?
I don't believe this is, no. So this is a lot of replacing our internet that we have across the campus. So not only will this, you know, replace aging equipment, but it actually should make it better and more access across campus as well.
Okay, super. Thank you for that. Any other discussion following that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. All right, next up is the Student Success Committee Report, and trustee Rutan.
Thank you, Chair Rail. The Student Success Committee met at eleven AM on Monday, March fourth, here in room one eleven. Gurbeshon Singh presented the annual affiliation renewal list. All agreements were approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently on the consent agenda of the March twenty-first board packet. Amy Sellers presented two career-ready renewal agreements. Both agreements were approved by the committee. Complete details can be found on the consent agenda of the March twenty-first board packet. Gurbeshon Singh presented curriculum updates for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic years. All changes were approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently on the consent agenda of the March twenty-first board packet. Shelley Allen presented an update to the student trip and travel policy, which the recommended changes rename the policy to student trip and travel policy three one eight point oh eight and added applicability and purpose statement and defined student travel. So that was renewed, the recommended changes, rename the policy, added applicability and purpose statement and defined student travel. So I have a recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Student Success Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college's administration to approve modification to the student trip, travel policy three one eight point oh eight as shown subsequently in the board packet.
Are you making that motion?
I am making a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Rutan, seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Back to you, trustee Rutan.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. Next up is our president's recommendations for action, and we'll start with the treasurer's report. And back to you, trustee Hamill.
Thank you. The treasurer's report, the board packet includes the treasurer's report for the month ending January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Some items of note include page one includes a general post-secondary technical education fund, which are the primary operating funds of the college. January is the seventh month of the college's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. NAD Valerian Tax Distribution of sixty-seven million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-one was received from the county treasurer during January and was distributed as follows. The general fund received sixty-three million, six hundred thousand, one hundred and forty-one. The special assessment fund received one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and the capital outlay fund received four million, one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars for the total of sixty-seven million, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. Also during January, state aid payments of twelve million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand and twenty-eight dollars were received and recorded as following. The general fund, eight million, eight, eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and the post-secondary technical education fund of three million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ending January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to audit. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hamill, seconded by trustee Rutan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is our monthly report to the board from our president, and Dr. Corb, you've been here now for, coming up on ninety days, it's pretty hard to imagine, but.
It is.
So, how's it going?
It's going really well.
Good.
It is. We are accomplishing a lot of things.
All right, well, tell us what you got going on.
But, well, I, since we had the report from the honors faculty, I feel compelled to tell you a story about when I was walking down the hall one day, and I had two students stop me, Olivia and Leah, and they were honors students, and they said, are you the president? And I said, yes. They said, oh, well, we need to have a conversation with you because we're part of a scavenger hunt, and one of the things we have to do is have a conversation with the president. So I had a delightful conversation with Olivia and Leah, and they took a selfie, you know, to prove that we'd had this conversation. And then a couple of weeks later, I get an email with the selfie that says, thank you so much, we won the scavenger hunt. So they do all kinds of things in the honors program.
So cool.
But it was cool. It was pretty fun. So I think you have a copy of my notes at your, at your place, but I, you'll see that there's a little bit of information there about enrollment. It continues to be steady. We're not expecting like lots of huge enrollment increases right at the moment because of where we are in the semester. But you can also see for the non-credit courses or in CE, one of the things that we follow there is at what percent of, you know, total enrollment of our goal are we at this point in time? And we're at seventy-eight percent of that goal as of March nineteenth. So that is also coming along really well.
Sorry, is that for next semester or for this current semester?
For the fiscal year.
Yes, the fiscal year.
Where are you seeing that?
So the, the way that the continuing education enrollment, because it's continuous enrollment, they don't go by semester.
Got you.
So we really kind of just track where are they in the entire, in the year? And so it's, they're at seventy-eight percent of their overall goal for the year.
For the year.
Okay. So the League of Innovation, of which we're a part of, you know, their board meeting was on March sixth and seventh in Dallas, Texas. Dr. McLeod and I attended those meetings. And so one, there, and obviously, there are a lot of things discussed and everything, but I thought what was probably most notable was through a strategic planning process that they have been through, they created, in addition to all of the, the things that they already do as far as the conference and, and the learn, leadership summit and some of those kinds of things, they went through a strategic planning process and developed three new pillars that they identified as goals to promote growth and address changing needs in education. We talked a lot about the changing needs in education. But those three pillars are resource development, so helping to secure resources aligned with community colleges' missions. And they're talking about the, the league helping to potentially find some of those resources, but also helping colleges identify, how can we find our own resources as well? Workforce solutions is another pillar, and that is just supporting transformation of upskill and reskill in the workplace and also looking at additional industry collaborations. So spent quite a bit of time talking about that. Innovation and transformation is a third pillar to support and empower leaders to drive educational transformation. And one of the, one of the taglines or one of the concepts that we spent a lot of time talking about was this idea that education has to move at the speed of business. And so as you can imagine, that, that generated a lot of conversation, but there are a lot of changing needs out there, and we have to be flexible enough to meet those needs. And so that is really, that is really their focus, and their focus is on helping all of us, even though we're, we're board members, we should contribute in that kind of thing, but also helping us to develop some of those skills as well. So it was good, good meeting. You always have a great opportunity to network, so, so that was good. This morning, I had the opportunity to attend one of our Business Breakfast Series meetings. And so there were fifty-eight different businesses registered, and continuing education, workforce development, continuing education sponsors this three times a year, and they have a speaker, and then it is an opportunity for these business people to connect, network, and learn. And so today, this morning, at seven AM, we had the breakfast, but the speaker was Marquise Harris, our executive director of inclusion and belonging, and his topic was cultivating belonging, an intentional approach to employee engagement. And it was just a really good opportunity to listen and interact, learn with, and, and kind of listen and look at, at what all the businesses were looking at. They held breakout sessions as well, and those breakout sessions were facilitated by partners of ours from several of the area chambers of commerce. So it was a great collaborative effort and something that I thought was really, really a good showcase of Johnson County Community College and ability to bring those community partners together. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Corb. I, it's interesting to me how the league board pillars and your Business Breakfast Series sort of dovetailed, you know, I, there, if you talk to the chambers of commerce, they will tell you, we need more collaboration as well. And so the opportunity to bring those two groups of people together is, is something we certainly ought to cultivate as much as we can. So any questions or comments for Dr. Corb? Trustee Rutan.
I also wanted to commend Marquise and the Office of Inclusion and Belonging. Yesterday, they had a series that they're starting called Building Bridges, and they had Daryl Burton and Lamont McIntyre from The Miracle of Innocence, that they have been in jail improperly. They were innocent for decades, over twenty years each, and they came and talked, and it was a really good attendance, I think, by faculty, staff, and a lot of discussion about hope and applicability to, I think, this college and life. And so I just wanted to say, commend you for starting that series and making our college a place together and have these discussions.
Thank you for that. I've heard Daryl Burton speak. It always strikes me how he speaks of taking one foot forward instead of, instead of looking back, and I, and what an astounding thing to be able to do, given his life experience. So any other questions for, for Dr. Corb? Thank you very much, and thank you for all that you're doing, stepping in and filling in when we needed you, and we look forward to having you around for a little bit longer.
You're here.
You're here. Okay, that brings us to the new business portion of our agenda. I'm not aware of any new business unless someone wants to make me aware of something. Old business, I'm also not aware of any old business we need to take up, and so that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for the board to take up, in a single motion, several items of a fairly routine nature, and I'll first ask if there is anyone who would like to request to have anything pulled from the consent agenda. Hearing none, I will move that we adopt the consent agenda as contained in the board packet, and I'm not talented enough to give you the page numbers right off the top of my head. It looks like maybe pages forty-five to something in the seventy-something range. We'll get this, get us close. What's that?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. So I'll make that motion is, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries six to zero. I need to get better with the staples. We do have an executive session this evening. And so at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiation, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for one hour. We will begin at six thirty PM. Will that work for everyone?
Yes.
Six thirty PM and end at seven thirty PM, at which time, open session will resume at this same location. We'd like to invite Dr. Judy Corb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Rachel Leers, Dr. Gurbeshon Singh, Janelle Vogler, Kelsey Nazar, and Greg Goheen to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by trustee Smith Everett, seconded by trustee Rutan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries six to zero. We will convene an executive session at six thirty. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken, and at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to go into a second executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiation, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for twenty minutes and will begin at seven thirty-five and end at seven fifty-five. Open session will resume at this same location at that time. We would like to invite Dr. Judy Corb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Rachel Leers, Dr. Gurbeshon Singh, Janelle Vogler, Kelsey Nazar, and Greg Goheen to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
You do.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion made by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Smith Everett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries four to zero. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second.